To our special meeting, I now call that to order. Today is Monday, December 16th, 2024. The time is six o'clock. Thank you all for being here. Ms. Garcia, roll call, please.
Mayor Keith Eaton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kathy Adam.
Here.
Councilmember Bucelata.
Here.
Councilmember Maldonado.
Here.
Councilmember Bencina.
Here.
Councilmember Bedford. Let the record reflect we have a.
Here.
Let the record reflect we have a quorum.
All right, thank you. For a moment of silence, let's just sit for a minute. At this time, I just want to pause for a moment of silence and take a moment to reflect and offer our thoughts on those who can't be with their loved ones this season. This includes the brave men and the women in our armed forces who are away from their families, as well as those in our community who may be facing hardships, loss, or difficult Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. At this time, I'm going to open up our first call to the public. Call the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council limits, rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made to those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask for a matter to be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act in any manner during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. So I have three calls to the publics in person tonight, and I'll take them in order that they were given to me.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Kathy Lehman. I'm a resident of Florence. You've seen me here before, maybe not you newbies, but the rest of you have. I'm speaking tonight as the Chairman of the Florence Community Services Advisory Board. We've been working very diligently to put together a priority list for fiscal year 26 with Mr. King and his department. I want to make sure that you're all aware of our priority list as we move into the budgeting season. We've currently identified five projects that we want to move forward with. First, we call the Wildflower Project. This is a project to identify and spread native Arizona seed mixes of wildflowers throughout the town. Mr. King's department will be working to identify these areas. Somebody suggested the roundabout. Talking about entry into the town mostly. Project number two, we call the Havelina Project. This is a project of the Peg's Art Center. They have created life-size sculptures of Havelinas and other native Arizona animals to be created and placed in parks throughout Florence. We're hoping that we can commission two of these Havelinas to be placed in two different locations, two parks. The Teen Center, that's also on our list. We want to identify and designate a consistent and safe location for teens and tweens to meet. We started identifying some places just at our meeting Thursday night, so we're raring to go on that. We also have project number four, additional shade at the Little League Park, specifically the field bleachers. Some of the other areas in the Little League Park is already on the budget, but really those stands need some shade. And our last is Founder's Day 2026. You may know that that will be the 160th anniversary of the founding of Florence. We are the sixth oldest non-native American settlement in Arizona, and we're proposing to add a Founder's Day celebration to our Heritage Home Tour weekend and make it a weekend event. So this would be to showcase our history and heritage through the events through that weekend. So I bring you this information so that you know that when we come before you over the next several months during the budget season, I usually show up for those and ask for money, so I'll be doing that again. Some of our members might also be too. The Community Services Advisory Board, we believe that these projects can help advance the town of Florence, not only for its residents, but also helping us attract more visitors. Thanks for allowing me to speak.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Arthur Snake Neal. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Council. Hold Council. I came to speak on the intentions of the vacant seat. I was speaking, and I had some people say that they didn't think I had any interest in it and that I was supposedly done, and honestly, I was supposedly done. But my dedication to this council goes toward the need of this council. And like I said, I would be willing to help in any capacity that this council needs, if that's sitting on that seat or anything else. I also believe that Johnny is a great guy, really like Johnny. I consider him a great friend, and I think he's very smart and a great guy. I just, for myself, I just wanted to be known that I want to do whatever the council needs. And if that is what the need be is, I am totally willing, very willing to do it, actually. So I just wanted to get out there and clear that up. Also, someone who didn't know that I was not on council anymore decided to tell me about our roundabout, and they had a great idea, and I said I would share it because I was going to be here, great idea about lighting up where it says "The Town of Florence." So I said, sure, I'd tell them. I'm not on council anymore, but I think that would be something that would be pretty awesome to have lights that shine in different colors for whatever we're celebrating that month or whatever we're dedicating that month or whatever we're doing that month. I think that would be a great idea. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker is Tom Rankin. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Tom Rankin. I live at Highway 345, 287 here in Florence. I'm a lifelong resident of Florence, and I would like you to know that I am very interested in the empty seat that sits over to your right, or my right, your left, Mr. Mayor. Do I have the interest in the town of Florence at heart? Yes, I do. I've been associated with the town since 1980. I've been off council for eight years now, last serving as the mayor for four years. I have an interest in what's going on around here because I had something to do with what we've started here. I'm still trying to determine the need for Florence more than whatever, and I think we have to decide, do we want to be a place with a workforce, or are we going to be a bedroom community? Are we going to be a mix? There's one industrial area that's here within the town limits this time, or there's two really, but one has never done anything, one can be taken very fast. We've been depending on the possibility of the northwest or north-south corridor coming in. And I can tell you right now, we're going to be down 20 years down the road if necessary, it looks like. So we have to figure out, how are we going to bring people here if that's what we're after? That's what we're trying to do. We have a main street that is small, it's short, but very productive if you take a look at it now, what's going on down there. A lot of businesses have opened up, which I'm glad to see. We're repairing some of the buildings down there that are old, older than I am, that are going to become businesses that'll put in more tax base here in Florence, which we do need. I've been involved with annexations where some of you live now. I was the mayor that was in charge of that annexation of Anthem. And I knew that that was going to be the future of Florence as far as growth was concerned. We see growth that's going on here today, and I take a look and see why is some of it being zoned for, the way it's being zoned. And I think I have enough interest in the community to provide you information that I have from past, served on a rural transportation board and go into state transportation meetings, and I have the time. My job, my business allows me the opportunity to do what needs to be done, and I'm more than happy and like to serve with you to get this done for Florence. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. All right, is there anyone else in here or online that would like to speak at this time? Not seeing any, we'll now close the first call to the public. Item number six, six A, discussion approval, disapproval, instructing the town clerk on procedure to be used to fill the vacant town seat. Ms. Garcia, can you please fill us in on this one?
Mayor and members of council, the last time we were here, the mayor and council chose option number four. Option number four on that agenda stated the following: The council could reach out to former members 20 years ago to today who have experienced and institutional knowledge. This approach minimizes the learning curve and ensures smooth transition, especially during period oppressing issues. To make this process effective, council could identify former members whose priority is aligned with current community goals and interview them for suitability. If this option is chosen, the interviews could take place at a work session on December 16th. The new members would be seated the first meeting in January. Based on this definition that was included inside and with speaking with several members, there was some confusion and unclarity of how we would proceed forward. So as your clerk, I'm asking for instructions on how you would like to proceed, starting with very key and basics. Who is it that you would like to bring forward for the interviews? Is it the interview process or another process you would like? What date would you like to do that? And depending on what the "that" is that we would be doing, how much notification do we need to give them to be able to prep for and have the date? So remember, open meeting law states we can have a meeting within 24 hours of a agenda being posted, so you are not confined to any timelines besides making sure that you hit the appropriate statutory guidelines. So I'm seeking direction on how I shall proceed to notice people and how we're going to proceed with the selection process.
All right, very good. Well, thank you, Lisa, for that. So, and I might just add, in discussions afterwards, of course, Monday night was full of a lot of stuff, a lot of different emotions, a lot of different thought processes, so this was something that we could have kind of furthered on, but we decided not to. And in being, it was certainly under my purview to make these recommendations and guidance. I felt like it's just not my job. It's everybody else's job up here. So as we're moving forward, so I'll open up right now to council members for discussion. Again, the three questions primarily tonight, at least, would like answered are in our packet. So who would like to be recognized first? Councilmember Bencina.
I'm, you know, I was for allowing residents to apply similar to what's been done the last four times. It was voted to go this route, but I can see where we somewhat can do what has been done in the past four times by allowing any council members or past mayors to apply and be interviewed before this council. So I would say we go with that process. It kind of deviates a little with opening to the residents, but it does allow past councils and past mayors to do this.
I'd like to make a point of clarity. We've already voted on the process. We're not here tonight to vote on the process, on a change.
That is correct. So in answering, in answering these questions, so... So just continue.
Well, can I get an explanation then of what was just stated?
It's hard to hear. Your mic is loud, so I don't think we can hear my [inaudible]. What Mr. Bencina just said was that he would like to allow for all members of former council or mayors to be able to apply, and he would like to see them interviewed, is what I heard.
Thank you. I couldn't hear everything either, Tony, sorry about that.
I'm sorry. I thought you said open applications.
I'll try to figure this out.
Okay, very, all right, very good. So, so moving forward then, next, who would we like to be recognized next? Vice Mayor Adam, or council member?
All right, so just going down the line, the three questions, how far back should we go? I would say 10 years. And for question number two, I don't think they should have to conduct any interview. Their actions that they've done speak for themselves, but I think a statement, a draft, to draft, for them to draft a statement should be the best thing. And for the third one, yes, I think we should hold a special meeting to consider the applicants.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
I'd like, if I could, just to make a comment to the public because I've heard from folks again. I understand that there's some confusion out there and maybe discomfort with the council appointing a second seat. And I just want to restate, and Ms. Garcia, please correct me if I'm wrong, what happened to us this round was unprecedented in the state of Arizona for a municipality in terms of having a candidate withdraw from the election after the election. And it has thrown the whole staff and council into a brand-new territory where we have to figure out how to do this and do this legally. So that is the only reason we are doing this. We all agree, we would prefer, preferred it was a vote by the people, but it just didn't go that way. So now we're in a position very similar to when we had to consider a town manager. And one of the reasons why I recommended having a past council member is because this council sitting right here is facing a very steep learning curve on some very critical issues that are facing our town. And for that reason, I would like to recommend that we go back only as far as the last sitting council because they are already familiar with the issues that we need a fast start on and we need to understand what we're going to do as a town. I think a statement would be fine. I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission when we had more applicants than seats, and we asked the commissioners to reapply by interviewing, and Councilmember Bucelata was liaison then, and we lost two very good commissioners because they didn't feel they were respected. And I think it's safe to say, we have watched our council members on this dais at least twice a month for four years. So we should be very familiar with who they are, what, how they think, and what their positions are. I have a question I would ask, one question, and my question would be, what is your pressing priority and why do you want to come back to council? What is it you didn't get done that you would like to work on now? That would be my only question. I would recommend it to be a written statement. I would recommend that it comes in within two weeks. I'm just looking at the calendar. Today's the 16th. I understand there's the Christmas holidays, but this should not take a lot of thought, right? You want to come back to council, you should know darn well why you want to come back to council. So I would say by the 30th, I would like to request a special meeting on January 6th for the council to review and decide. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next, Councilmember Bedford.
I pondered with this, wow. Your mic is messed up. Yeah, it's broken. It's broken, okay. Can you hear me, you all?
Yes.
Now, okay. I pondered with this for a while, but I understand that the seriousness that we have something facing us going forward, it should be done with someone who actually sat on the current I also want to know, what are you going to do differently that you didn't do prior? Because I'm ready to, I'm ready to really get into the work so we can take care of Florence and do what we have to do. So can we kind of speed this up opposed to waiting until January the 6th? Can we kind of like do it on another date? Because of, just to write something, that doesn't take long. We got to fill this seat so we can go ahead and do what we need to do.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, would you just clarify? I don't know what you mean by speed it up. With the Christmas holidays, I think the first time we can meet is January 6th.
Okay.
I believe, I believe that is the case.
You can meet whenever you say you want to meet.
With a full, and I think with that being said, I think it was basically just kind of a poll of council members to see who's going away for the holidays and who's not. And I know that, I know, Tony, you're going to be gone, you know, for the time, and this is something I believe that we need to, a full council absolutely needs to do. I don't know if we can do it any earlier than on the 6th. Is there, Tony, when do you get back?
The 28th. Could be the 29th, depending on the snow when I'm driving.
Yeah. Then it's New Year's, and so I think it's just because of the holidays. And that was kind of the thought process moving into this as well. I know is to, is to speed up the process, is to get it going, and we've got to get it going. So I absolutely agree with that. Now, what I would ask then, on the, on the 6th, if we were to do it on the 6th, could we possibly start this process earlier, possibly at 5:30 if we were going to do it this way?
The meeting for the 6th is your regular meeting. So the regular meeting begins at 6 o'clock, so if council would allow me to do an agenda for 5:15, if everybody could be here by 5:15, that would include the entire process. And I'm assuming we're going to do an appointment at that meeting with a swearing in is what we need to be ready for? Is that what I'm being directed as?
There is that possibility, yes. So now, I think we, probably 5:30 is better.
Can I make my comment before we just?
Yes, please, I haven't made a comment yet, so please, Councilmember Bucelata.
I just wanted to, I was kind of letting the new council give their, their views on it. I would agree that, I would say, the last four, max eight years, I think would be fair. I also agree to a statement of interest, and I think January 6th is enough time for those statements to be reviewed, received, and I can be here as early as 5:15 or 5:00 that day if needed, whatever you guys want to do, I'm good with.
Okay, thank you. So finally, before we have, before we move into a motion, so, so my thought is kind of very similar. The whole idea of putting this and voting on this and putting it forward on Monday was so we could move things along quickly. We can get, we've got a lot of business to do, we know that, and having someone familiar, I'm certainly not opposed to, to that in my discussion Monday, but I also believe that, that going back too far negates the answer, or the answer that we're all looking for, for that person. And absolutely, I apologize for anybody that disagrees with that, but I also believe that the last sitting council that just left as well, on the, there are a lot of questions. So I don't know that a simple statement, I think maybe posing a couple of questions in a written statement back to us that could be discussed on the floor, be part of the council packet, as well as discussed on the floor with those persons that are interested. And I don't think there's any issue with that or anything wrong with that.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask, clarify? So we don't ask the questions ahead of time? We wait and we ask them on the floor?
I believe that, no, I believe that we issue the questions.
Oh, okay.
To the folks that are interested. Let them include that in their packet back to us, or response back to us for our review and for our submittal into the packet, and then I believe that we have those discussions and those folks be present, and we have those discussions on the floor with them. And I don't know that having a couple, three questions is out of the, out of the ordinary for this kind of thing. Again, like the Vice Mayor had alluded to, this is, this is new. This sets a tone from what we're doing and how we're doing it. It sets a tone for everyone else in the state that comes up against this kind of thing. None of us up here wished for this. Certainly, we have other thoughts in our head moving into that, but this is what we've got, and so moving forward. So then, with my preference would be just that, and then we would just set possibly a 5:30 on the 6th, and with the possible, it's possible appointment then on the 6th as well, and swearing in, if that is the case, the way that we go with that.
Mayor, I'd like to comment.
Councilmember Bencina.
I could agree with, personally with, as Mo said, 10 years, or I could agree with Nicole on eight years, because that is going back. I can agree with providing them questions, okay? But I don't think it should be limited to the, to the three. We have a fine staff, an excellent staff, and if we run into an issue, they'll be able to help us, to guide us, plus with the help of the council members, the three that are, that are still here, we can get through these issues that the town is faced with. It doesn't necessarily have to be, and I still may end up voting for one of the past councils. I just believe in processes that are consistent with the past. So I could go with eight years, I could go with 10 years. I'm easy with the questions, no interviews, just questions, and as you said, bring it to the, to the council, so.
Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion? Vice Mayor.
I'm on the path of giving Ms. Garcia very clear directions. So do we still have discussion on how far back we're going? Do we vote? How do we proceed?
You would need a motion, and the motion will direct me. Four on the floor directs your clerk. So there's a couple other things that I would like to have clarification and direction on with that motion. One, if we're going to have it be included in the packet, I would like to have a December 30th deadline. If that works for everyone, could you tag that onto your motion? The other thing I would like to have you tag onto whatever motion is made, is that the clerk may work with the mayor, who can give me direction on anything further. That means that if there's a question that comes up, something that you have not thought about, and the question comes up, then it will be the mayor who will be directing the clerk on the topic so that we do not have to come back to a meeting to determine it, if that will work with everyone.
Yes, it does, thank you. So with that, if there's no other discussion on that, I will, I'll look for a motion?
All right, I'd like to make a motion, and I'll start with the statement that the council will direct that the town clerk has the ability to consult with the mayor at any step in this process for anything that we didn't cover. The second part of that, I would say, I'm making a motion that we look only as far back as the last council. Again, this is not a question for staff. The issues we're facing are council member issues, and that's why I think it's important we have council member experience with us. I would like to see that we have two questions asked of the applicants. One would be, what do you want to get done on this council that you weren't able to do before? And number two, what would you do differently than you did before? I think that was Councilmember Bedford. Okay. Number three, that they will be written statements submitted to the town clerk due by December 30th. And number- And number four, that it be added to our agenda at 5:30 on January 6th, and at that point, the discussion would be on the floor. The applicants would be questioned if needed, and we would take a vote. Did I cover everything?
Okay, we have a motion. Look for a second.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, for this item. Is there any other discussion? With that, we'll do a vote.
Would you like a roll call vote, sir?
I would like a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Maldonado.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adam.
Aye.
Councilmember Bedford.
Aye.
Councilmember Bassina.
No.
Councilmember Bucialato.
Aye.
Mayor Eaton.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you very much. Moving into, I'm sorry, into new business, 7A. This is discussion approval, disapproval of entering into a service contract with Kruger Inc. for the maintenance of the territory, or the hereditary disk filters at the South Wastewater Plant, CIP SU-121, in the amount not to exceed $335,419.50. Chris Soss. That's not on. I think now it's on. He's yelling.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight's item is the tertiary disk filters for the South Wastewater Treatment Plant. The town purchased these, I believe, in approximately 2014, definitely before my time, so I think it's approximately 2014. The plant was not constructed with these disk filters, but they are an industry standard for the ultraviolet disinfection system that we are going to be installing or completing a, a second ultraviolet disinfection system. The current one, as you know from the last meeting, is non-functioning, so it is being replaced. The current tertiary disk filters, the filtering media has sat and is no longer usable. The inspection that was done last year showed a certain percentage of filters that needed to be replaced. Once they opened it up this year, additional work needs to take place. The complete project is, as stated, $335,419.50. The contractor or, or supplier of this material is the manufacturer of this Veolia. So, that is who can, that is who we can purchase the filters from, and the DBA is Kruger. So, this is a sole source because they are the manufacturer, and they're, they're the only ones who sell that filter. I did ask several different contractors, and they all told me the same thing. This is the only company that sells these filters. So, you cannot go to Walmart and buy these filters and just put them in our system. So, essentially, competition is impracticable for this item as it relates to procurement policies. Are there any questions? So, this item is needed as part of our permit requirements, if I didn't make that clear at the beginning, and is also identified in the town's consent order. So, this is a needed item for the operation of the plant outside of any permitting requirements in order to protect the ultraviolet disinfection bulbs. It is needed by our permit and the consent order.
Thank you, Chris. Does any council member have any questions, please? Councilmember Bucialato.
I was just wondering if, what do we do if that supplier goes under or no longer has those filters that are needed? Do we have a, a Plan B or, because it happens sometimes? I mean, are we going to buy some extras just to make sure we're good for a while? Like, what is the plan if we no longer can get this from this one supplier?
Well, that's actually what's happened with the ultraviolet disinfection system that we discussed at the last meeting. It is rare, but it does happen if you have a, a certain piece of infrastructure will be only supported for so long, whether a company is in business or not. They will not continue to make parts for 1955 Chevy Bel Air only so long. So, on this here, every year will be, well, every, every month at the beginning, we'll be doing inspections. We will be ordering an additional 10% of filters so that we'll have 10%, which I believe there's approximately 866 filters for this, so we'll have approximately 86 extra filters. And as needed, we'll continue to order, just like we do water meters, nodes, and stuff like that. But there's only so much we can do to ensure. So, the answer to your question is, at some point, as this becomes obsolete, the town will be buying a new disk filter, a new sand filter, a new filter of some type at some place. Generally, a lot of the infrastructure that we look at is approximately 20 to 25 years old as far as the need, not the concrete in the plant, but if you look at a, a fine screen, if you were to operate that in an effective way, you should be getting probably 20 to 25 years. If you continue to rebuild it, it might be longer, but at some point, the, the overall structure will probably be, need more than just bearings or a new surface. It will tend to just eventually fall apart.
Councilmember Bencina.
Well, Councilwoman Nicole Bucialato asked kind of one of the questions, but what's the life expectancy out of these? And I'm assuming you'll put them in a CIP for how years for procurement?
Yeah. As just stated, approximately 20 to 25 years of the design life. We have performed just this, in the last 60 days, we've turned over new projects for the rate study. And in that, based on the way that our rate studies are conducted, we've identified essentially the replacement of almost every large piece of equipment that is not the concrete basins, if you will. But if you look at, if you look at the pistogrit, it's going to be on there. If you look at the fine screen, it's going to be on there. Everything now is going to be in that, which used to be more caught in the, in the O and M budget, but these large expenditures are going to be identified in the study, whether we call that O and M or not. In theory, a capitalized expenditure is not the replacement of an HVAC unit with an HVAC unit. That's, that's just considered O and M. But in order to capture that, it needs to be identified in the rate study. So, yeah, we have identified everything within that rate study that's not essentially the concrete basins themselves. But if you look at everything else of large ticket, now, it won't, it will not look at a $400 little pump. It won't identify that because our, probably our O and M budget all in is probably between the two different line items in the wastewater industry, probably $500,000. So, it, it captures a lot of small stuff. It will capture the, the replacement of the 10% of filters, as the councilwoman asked. It'll capture that, but it will not capture for an entire rebuild, so, or a, a replacement cost. We've identified that, and you will see that in the forthcoming rate study.
Thank you. Anybody, any other questions? Councilmember Maldonado.
You kind of already answered my question about the PM, like what kind of PM you guys are going to be doing on those. So, thanks for answering that already. The second question I really had was, do you guys have somewhere to store those filters once they get in? Do you guys have that capability of putting them somewhere where they don't get damaged or whatnot?
We do. Currently, we have a, a Conex, and me and the town manager discussed the need to build a steel building on that site. It needs to be large enough, maybe not necessarily full-blown, air-conditioned, but it needs to have lights. It needs to be, have racks. It needs to have all the capabilities so that we are able to store. We completed a study this year of single point of failure redundancy at that plant. So, sometimes, there is only one item that kind of, like a, a, the belt screen, I mean, the, the fine screen runs on a level transducer. So, when that level transducer fails, let me take a step back. A level transducer is a, an ultrasound, it is something that measures the height of that water. And so, when it fails, it fails in the position that makes the fine screen run essentially 24 hours a day, because you don't want it to fail in the closed position. You want it to fail and assume that it's running all at the same time. That is good for the, the health of the plant, but it also wears out the brushes exceedingly fast. So, the idea is to have a second, or maybe even a third, $5,000 part. But as, as, as asked, we also have to have storage for that. So, we have identified the need for that in that forthcoming rate study, a steel building that would be needed to store those things. We have room now to store a small amount of filters, but as we actually become more stocked, we have an inventory system, maybe even a barcode reader. We don't have the room for that today, but we need to have that so that we'll be organized in the future, and it's identified in that rate study.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Chris, thank you so much for that, and we'll look forward to that during your budget session. Talked about the, the building. All right, with that, if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve entering into a service contract with Kruger Inc. for the maintenance of their territory disk filters at the South Wastewater Plant, CIP SU-121, in the amount not to exceed $335,419.50.
A second.
A second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, item eight is called to the public. We'll now open a second call to the public. If anyone wishes to speak, please come forward, state your name for the record. Comments remain limited to three minutes. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak that's in person or online? Not seeing any, I'll close the call to the public. Call to the council. Councilmembers, it's your opportunity to share your updates, current events. Please keep your remarks to current events only. Councilmember Bedford.
I enjoyed the conference that I went to last week, and I've learnt a lot of things on that conference, and I definitely, I received a lot of business cards and things like that, so I will be calling them and seeing what we can do differently here in Florence opposed to the other little towns. Basically, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Bencina.
I too, as part of the Arizona League in Cities Training Program that we went to on Friday and, Thursday and Friday, and it was an awesome training. We learned quite a bit. I got to meet some people that are serving on councils in towns that I used to live in, and that was, and talked to them and where their growth is going. So, it was enjoyable. And to be with my fellow council members, a mayor, and town manager, and Cliff, the only lawyer that ever showed up. I also want to say, I went to my first Christmas parade. I've always stayed away from it because of how packed they were with people, and boy, was it packed. I walked that street and started saying hello to people. It was a great job by our, our staff from Community Services, again, enjoyable, and I look forward to the next one. And I appreciate everything everybody's going to do, and I want to wish all the staff and all the residents that are here or watching a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we'll see you all after the first of the year.
Thank you. Councilmember Maldonado.
Thank you, Mayor. I also just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and please be safe out there. Make sure you guys are doing buddy checks. Check up on your, on your, on your neighbors. Check up on your, on your friends. Just check and see how they're doing, and if you see something, say something. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Bucialato.
I don't have much to say tonight other than I wish everybody a very prosperous holiday season, stay safe, and I just wanted to say that at the Community Services meeting Thursday night, the room was filled with just excitement for our town, and it was very inspiring, and they are doing good things over there. And so, if you ever stop in, it's the second Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM in, I think it's Ruggles Room 1 at the library, and, you know, they opened a call to public, and in the two years that I've been liaising, I, I think maybe one time somebody had something to say. Normally, members of the public don't show up to the meetings, and I think this team that they have now is really strong, and they are going in a very great direction. So, if you guys have the time, I encourage everyone to just stop in every now and then, and, and to let them know your thoughts, because it's, it's, it's going in a, in a great, in a great motion, and I'm, I'm very happy to be on that board, and I just encourage people to get involved with more than just council. You can stop in at any time, to planning and zoning, to school board, to, and I just encourage people to do that. Let that be one of your resolutions in 2025. Get more involved. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Adam.
I have a lot to talk about, starting with the Pinellas County Historical Museum Party. I want to thank the town for buying two tables and for participating, and we had a really fun night. I want to also extend, as everyone else has, to Director King, to follow up in just one week after the Parata Parade with the light parade. And I'm sorry, I've forgotten which staff member I was talking to of yours, and he said, because there's new things out there, and he said, "Your goal is to make it better every year." I honestly don't know how much more lights you can add, but it is absolutely stunning out there, and the activities and the enthusiasm, and I thank our town manager. Our float was awesome. I really appreciated having the wagon, and we had so much fun. And the fire department, having the stuffed animals is way better than throwing candy at kids, right? So, that was a big hit. I did make it over to the pancake breakfast, and I, I, really, you were cleaning out the whole store. It's wonderful that people are that generous and want to participate, and those toys went a long way, so I thought that was terrific. And I'll just say this, I was at the league one and a half day meeting. I've been in all the training sessions with some of our sitting council members. These folks have been in office all of a week, maybe, and the meetings that have gone on, the planning, the interaction, I promise you, this team is going to deliver for Florence. Everybody have a very wonderful holiday.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, most everybody has hit on everything that I was going to say anyway. The museum party was amazing. Pancake breakfast, that was so much fun. I will tell you, the chief really worked hard, was working up a sweat. I watched him, done a very good job, and, and just the interaction with the people of Florence. The, also the training that we went to this week, I got to meet up with old friends that I've known for a long time that are now council members, which was really good. Other than that, I also just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, to our staff, to our folks of Florence. And that's all I have. So, with that, item number 10, council will now adjourn into an executive session for the purpose of discussing a counteroffer for a property purchase pursuant to ARS Section I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session.
Make a motion, we adjourn to executive session.
We have a motion?
Second.
The second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Or adjourned?